I want to thank everybody. You'll please join me in the Pledge of Believers.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have roll call please.
Counselor Hughes here. Counselor McElroy.
Here.
Counselor Metcalf.
Here.
Counselor Prokop.
Here.
Counselor Strobel.
Here.
Counselor Tinbusch.
Here.
Mayor Drinkwong.
Here. Thank you very much for that. We are at the first Assistant and Community Group comment. I have one in front of me. Would you like to speak now or on the second? Well, let's just speak on the second one. We'll just, we'll start into it right now. Get going. Okay, um, everybody's had a chance to read over the consent agenda. Do we have any questions? Any add-ons? Any takeaways? No? Okay. Can I have a motion on the floor, please?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
All right, can I have a second?
Second.
Number first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much for that. We are now at Department and Committee Reports. So we will start off, uh, let's go with. Future, do you have anything?
I have nothing right now.
Okay.
Nope.
Mike?
Nope.
Eddie? Jonathan?
Nothing. Um, I don't really have a lot. Uh, Arts Commission has the Arts at the Creek, uh, Weed Creek Park this week, this weekend, this Saturday. Um, I believe it's twelve to six. Um, but uh, it's gonna be a good fun day. Lots of, lots of fun, lots of arts, lots of uh, activities and lots of food, so.
Good. Excellent. Sounds fun. All right, um, I don't have any more here, so we'll go to the uh, City Attorney's Report.
Well, we have a couple of things. We've gotten some inquiries about urban renewal. And I kinda wanted to um, get an idea of where council is on some of these things, cuz I can have an opinion, but sometimes I'm wrong and I interpret it differently than you do. So um, these are theoretical. And the, the answer you give tonight won't be binding on any particular application. But we were asked um, a couple of things. One is if the equity that someone invests in a building could be um, could be considered their match. So if someone were to buy a building for three hundred thousand and they put a hundred thousand dollars down, if that would count as, as the match. Uh, and based off the kind of the decision last meeting, it seemed like the answer would be yes, but I wanted to check with you guys and see if that was the case.
Yeah, I, 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 I'm in favor of that. Yep. I think we talked about this this last time. Uh, we're talking about the building over here, uh, just in video.
I think we decided that it would be a case by case basis, um, that we would, you know, look at it in a case by case basis. I think that's what we decided.
Okay. So I think consensus says that yes.
All right. And then the, the second question was if someone acquired multiple buildings on one block. And they're in different LLCs. If those different buildings, we count. Uh, if each, each of them would be kind of a sta- could be a standalone application. So like i- in a block that may have three separate and distinct buildings in it. Um, would, would they be able to get grants for all three? Or, or would it be a grant for the block?
I think all three. That's separate versus the block. To qualify a grant for a block, it would have to be palacious project. One. Number two, the advantages of spreading that out over three different projects on that block gives us an opportunity, I would think, to put in different things that might fit. I don't know if it's.
I, I just think, and it, and these, all these questions are specifically because the, for purchasing properties, not the improvements. Am I hearing you correctly?
So I think that the, i- and I, I can't get into specifics, but um, there's some thought that if a person were to buy a building and then need to, so let's say three hundred grand, they put a hundred thousand dollars down as part of their financing. Then they would be, they would be looking to make improvements to that building. So all of the hundred thousand dollar grant would go to improvements to the building. But the idea was that instead of putting the money down, buying the building, and then having to come up with another hundred thousand dollars to, to get a match, that the hundred thousand dollars that they invested could count as the match, which would then speed the improvement portion, because all the city's funds would be used to improve the building.
Be in the same boat where it's not improving the tax value?
No, these are, these are things that would likely improve the uh, tax value of the building.
With that condition, I would be okay with it. If they're doing it just to, if it's not gonna meet the purpose of the grant programs to increase the tax base, right? We're taking it away from others.
Yeah, and, and to improve the quality of the downtown lived experience, which was something we talked about with the uh, last application.
Yeah.
And to kind of spur development. Those are some of the reasons that people want to do that.
And if it's multiple LLCs, but one owner of the LLCs, or, or we can show co- shared ownership from one person in those LLCs, it seems to me like there's, there, like, like Jerry had said, case by case basis, every one would need to be that, but it seems like there could be ways that that could work.
Yeah. A- and then the, the other question would be if you would want staff or myself to coordinate with people to try and leverage state grants. So there's, there's a, a Main Street state grant program that was, i- it's not new, but it's twice as much money next year as it has been in the past. So that would be uh, the max grant in that program would be four hundred thousand. And so like the, 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 someone's, theoretically someone's investment of a hundred, and then the city's investment of a hundred, if you improved it, would then probably allow them to leverage a state grant of up to four hundred, which would all be used to improve the building. So you can, I mean, if we were able to kind of leverage those sort of state grant programs, then we could see something that would normally take five or six years to improve to happen within a, a year or two.
So, so if that grant program, um, would that also, would that apply to a building off of Main, like, um, say the, the strip mall where Subway is, um, would that apply to, to a business that far out?
So that what they're, what they're really most interested, what that, that particular grant program is most interested in doing is kind of addressing blight in historic, kind of historic parts of town. So like a dilapidated building would be able to be improved, and so it looks part, part of it is like attracting people to a place and understanding if you have, you know, kind of derelict or blighted buildings, that that makes it less attractive to people and that you wanna have those buildings open so that businesses can be in there and thrive. It's kind of the purpose of that. There's a, there's a block grant as well that's more, has more to do with, you know, potential housing stuff, but I don't know that that's a program we could use.
What it's, what if it's a business that needs to be completely torn down and rebuilt from the ground?
So the Heritage Grant, which is the one you're talking about, i- it's an Oregon Main Street Grant, so it applies within our Oregon Main Street boundaries, which is our downtown zone.
Okay. But like I said, I mean, would it, would have, if, if a business had to be completely torn down to the ground and built, would they qualify for that, that grant?
So I, I think if the, if the building were taken to the studs, I mean, like some buildings, they may have like asbestos siding or something like that, that's, you know, hazardous to the public. So with a building like that, if all the asbestos siding was removed and then Hardy Board or some other siding was added, um, I mean, we'd have to look at exactly what percentage of the building remained. But again, it's, this program's to kind of spruce up downtowns.
I'm, I'm just thinking of making one particular business, uh, one particular property attractive to purchase.
It, it, it is, it, there's some very specific parameters within the project for historic preservation. So if the property is within a historic time zone, then i- they want you to preserve things within that.
The, the aesthetic.
Yeah, this is.
Not materials.
No materials. We ran into this last year when we applied for Hannah Smith's building in that she had to use, they were requiring her to use wood windows in the application because the building was so old.
Right, but that's aesthetics.
As opposed to vinyl.
Right.
Okay, you got, you guys have basically answered my question.
Okay. Sorry.
To answer your question, I think if there are three different LLCs moving the needle forward on this, and you can prove that you're using the individual grant for that specific LLC. I don't see a problem with it. I don't think we should deter members of our community that have the means to purchase, improve, and bring business to here. I don't think we should deter them from doing so. Think if they wanna do it and they got three different LLCs, as long as they separate them and they're used for the individual application, then I have no problem with it.
Okay. Any other comments? I think you got a consensus on that.
Great.
Great.
All right, is that all you have, Peter?
Um, we also had a meeting with the Director of DLCD, so the Department of Land Conservation and Development. It was a really uh, positive meeting. She was extremely excited to hear what was going on in Estacada. She's a water expert that has a background um, in that, and so we were able to discuss our reservoir project with her, as well as our need for additional um, uh, water rights. She had a lot of questions. Unfortunately, we had Elena there and, and she was able to provide a, a lot of the specific answers related to water use. It was just a really positive meeting. It seemed like she was really hearing us and um, she said her in the past, you know, sometimes the emphasis hadn't been on the last letter, which is development. But she wanted, she wanted to emphasize that and identify barriers to development and, and help with those. So uh, that was a great meeting and I'm sure it'll be an ongoing conversation.
Yeah, great. Thank you. Uh, Elena, you had something you wanted to add to it?
Yep, uh, you know, segueing into water, uh, I just wanna give you guys a little update. The um, July nineteenth and twentieth was over one point four, but we dropped to one point three three. So we have not yet hit where we would have a water curtailment. We're seeing this, I mean, you can see it in the graph, this continued yo-yo where we'll have one or two days over one point four, and then we'll drop back down. The cooler weather should help. Okay, next slide. Um, we're working with Clackamas County Public Alerts as to send out if we get to stage one, so we can send out the alerts through them. And if residents want to, they um, the information that we have in our utility system will be sent to Clackamas County, and they'll use that information to send out the alert. You should update your phone number with us if it is not current or, and your email. You can also, I would recommend everybody sign up for Clack, Clackamas County Public Alerts, because they also send out information like evacuation notices, which I think we all recognize is very important here. Um, okay, next. You guys had asked about grants. Um, this is a lot of information, so I'm just gonna go kind of quickly through this. Here's the list of grants we received in twenty twenty four. Um, I think the only one that we haven't talked about yet is we have uh, just received, we just got notification last week. So we are getting a rare AmeriCorps member. I know that we had talked about wanting to have somebody to handle communications, especially surrounding the wastewater plant and some of this water need language. Um, they'll start in September, and we received a grant from DEQ to cover that match, so it's gonna be no cost to the city. Uh, and then I think we've covered all the other ones previously, and then next. And here's the grants that we've received in twenty twenty three. Um, we did receive a grant from Four Lakeshore Water Access. Um, and then we've also received the, the T, TGM grant for the Transportation Master Plan and a hundred and twenty thousand dollars principal forgiveness for the high level reservoir, which we applied in twenty twenty three, but since we haven't built it yet, we technically haven't received that yet. Once that's built, we'll receive that. Next. Um, the small city allotments are grants we've received for several, several years. However, now that we're over five thousand, we are not able to apply for those. There's another program through ODOT where we can apply. Um, next. CBD, CDBG grants, which we have done in the past through Clackamas County. Uh, those have applied for very specific things, like in twenty twenty three, we did some of the um, ADA ramps up uptown. Next. Uh, we've received over a million dollars in Oregon Parks and Recreation Grants um, throughout the years. Uh, the library has received several grants. They uh, up, they bought Roxy, or what is it? Um,
Ramona.
Ramona, yes. They bought Ramona, but via a grant. Next. Um, and then we've had a few miscellaneous grants, such as the Housing Needs Analysis Grant. Um, we got a grant for doing some infrastructure work in the industrial campus. And then we had received the uh, grant that Peter was talking about in twenty nineteen. We received the Oregon Main Street Revitalization Grant, which we had at that point in twenty nineteen, done some matching funds with um, our, our urban renewal funding. So it was very successful back then, and, and hopefully we'll be applying again with the project next year. Um, and then so potentially apply this year, the Oregon Main Street Grant. Um, and then for next year, Oregon Parks and Recreation, there's a couple of different options. We looked at applying for the grant for the Lake Shore Project, uh, but you have to have a forty percent match, and we did not have that in SDCs this year, so we're hoping next year we'll have enough in order to be able to apply. Um, and then hopefully, since we're going to be starting the summer kicking off that Thriving Communities Program, maybe next year we'll be able to apply for some funding for Millsite. Fingers crossed. We'd love to get something going with that. Next, and that was it. Any questions?
It's very thorough. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for presenting that.
You're welcome.
If we could, I'd like to see some more recreation stuff as well, just to address the needs that we're behind on. I think for accessing land and stuff, I've been looking at it myself, so.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, part of, part of grants is they take, they take a lot of time. They take, uh, not just the application, but the management, especially when you get into the larger grants, then we're gonna have to, like this year, we're gonna have to do a single audit, which is, is a lot of Sadie's time and having to do a lot of extra paperwork for that. So staff capacity is, is also kind of hindering the ability to apply for some of these.
Chair Pro, right?
Yeah. Bringing in the, bringing in the dollars.
That's right, alright. Okay, next on the list, I have Chief Mendoza.
Thank you. Um, so tonight I plan on providing kind of an overview um, for the we'll call it the rollback of Measure One Ten, House Bill Four Zero Zero Two. And then also, um, I was also asked for an update on what Clackamas County is working on to revise their um, towing policies specifically to um, RVs. Um, so starting off with um, House Bill Four Zero Zero Two, uh, the finishing touches for this process are being put together this month. Uh, we have a meeting set up. Um, I believe it's next week. Um, we're kind of, we're finalizing everything. Everything's really close. Uh, been working with the um, several different people in law enforcement, but, but this is being led by the uh, Clackamas County DA's office. Uh, the DA's office is taking a lead on, on forming this um, deflection process is what they're calling it. Twenty-three counties in the state have elected to um, to uh, have a de- a deflection process, uh, when somebody is arrested for um, possession of drugs. Um, it's important that um, that you know that when someone is arrested for drugs, if there are other crimes that are involved in that, the, the deflection process does not um, dismiss these other charges. And so um, the DA's office, um, and the Sheriff's Office were uh, clear on that, that they, you know, we're, we're not, we're not just giving out get out of jail free cards because someone has drugs. So um, the drug portion may be held um, through the, or take it through the deflection process all by itself, um, or they may go through the coronal process depending on whether they qualify for this deflection. Uh, so essentially what's, what's happening is um, previously, uh, before Measure One Ten, most uh, drugs were a felony uh, crime, except for marijuana. Um, just the possession of them. And then it changed it to a, um, essentially a violation, um, similar to a, a seatbelt ticket. And then now we kind of landed right in between with an unclassified misdemeanor. Uh, the unclassified misdemeanor, what that allows is for a person to be placed on probation. So that's one of the uh, advantages uh, to an unclassified misdemeanor. And then all of the checks and balances that come with being on probation. Um, the DA's, when the, the deputies and the officers are going to follow their process, just like they would um, previously to Measure One Ten, except for now we have to look at this as a misdemeanor crime instead of felony. Uh, but someone would be placed under arrest for um, committing a crime. Uh, we'll collect the evidence, we'll process that person, take them to the jail, or issue a citation and lieu of custody. Uh, collect the evidence and process it and book the evidence and, and prepare a case for court. Um, then the DA's office will receive all that information, and the DA's office is gonna be the entity that makes the decision on whether somebody is eligible for this deflection process. What that's um, what that exactly entails is, is essentially being worked out, but they will have an opportunity to um, be connected and go to treatment. And if they um, go through with that process and, and are successful at whatever is determined is, is the success, then those charges would be dropped. They wouldn't be prosecuted for that. Um, if the person decides not to go through that process, then the DA's office has the ability um, to prosecute them for that crime. Um, Clackamas County, Clackamas County DA's office for a long time, or the Circuit Court has had a um, uh, we call it a um, community court that we've handled low level crimes in, um, it's been around for quite a while. Uh, the community court is gonna handle all of the drug charges, uh, and there's um, uh, Deputy DA Bill Stewart is gonna be in charge of those. And so it's really um, you know, it's kind of a, a way to cut through the, the red tape and deal, you know, the judges are, are used to just dealing directly with the uh, defendants on this. And if um, if they need to make accommodations, you know, with the DA's office and the defendant, so that they can attend treatment or, or follow through with this deflection process, they'll do that. And if they don't follow through, then it will um, trigger, you know, the, the criminal prosecution. Um, but the, as I mentioned earlier, that the, the deputies and the officers will just go ahead and go through the process like they would normally, and the reason for that, the reason that we're allowing the DA's office to make the decision on deflection is uh, simply that the state is requesting that we provide, you know, all of the uh, reasoning and demographics for providing deflection um, to people that we've arrested. And so we're allowing the DA's office to make that decision, so it's um, um, so there really wouldn't be any scrutiny on law enforcement as to who got deflection and why. It's just uh, basically the, the parameters of it, if it met the DA's requirements for that deflection. Uh, one thing that I did hear, uh, some other counties don't have in place on how many times someone can be offered deflection. Uh, that won't be the case in Clackamas County. Um, it, to my knowledge, at this point, um, someone's gonna be offered deflection one time, and if they don't follow through with that, then, then the next step is prosecution. Um, I don't know that that is, that, that one specific time has been landed on. There may be some variances to that, but um, at least that's kind of the, the theory or idea that we're operating with. Um, so it won't just be a, you know, somebody gets offered a deflection each time that we come into contact. There'll actually be some teeth behind this and, and some consequences. Um, and that's uh, uh, all of our uh, deputies and officers are gonna get training on that um, come August. And uh, this takes effect on September first. So that's what I have for an update on, on that. I'm happy to answer some questions if I can, if anyone has any.
What, what is the amount that qualifies for deflection? Under what amount?
Uh, it's gonna be, it really essentially is gonna be like that personal um, uh, personal use. Um, I don't know the, the exact amounts that they have set, but if you um, you know, if we get somebody that has a, a larger quantity that, that um, is significant enough to trigger a felony crime, then there, there wouldn't be a deflection uh, for that.
And are they offering the deflection for fentanyl? Possession?
Uh, I believe so, yeah, for a personal possession.
Um, and you said that all of the details of this for Clackamas County just haven't been quite ironed out yet. Sorry.
There's, I think that we have one more meeting, um, where it's gonna be finalized.
Okay, and then my other question is, and um, and you, and you won't have numbers on this right now, but I'm just curious, when you come into, come into contact with somebody who is in possession, um, what's a percentage that they don't have other, like, they don't have warrants or?
Yeah. Uh,
Just curious.
Yeah, that's, that's a tough one. I don't know that I could give you a percentage, but I, I would say that um, it it, it could happen. Um, it, it's probably, it, the more likely scenario is that we come into contact with some because of criminal behavior and then find drugs, uh, than just coming across somebody that has drugs. That's the, the more common way.
Anybody else?
And just to clarify, the, the changes are being made to those, you, you said personal possession. So kind of the user side as opposed to the dealer side. No real changes to the dealing side, right? Is that, that still a felony? Has been this whole time?
Correct. Right. This is only addressing um, smaller quantities personally used.
Gotcha.
Mike?
What, what is the prosecution for an unclassified misdemeanor if they don't follow through with the deflection? What, I mean, what is that? What are we talking about for sentence?
Um, I don't know, um, the, one of the, one of the changes to this was a request from the, from, for the, for the requirements of the judges to be uh, rolled back on, you know, what they had to do, like they had to follow specific matrices for things. I don't know what, um, where they're gonna land on that for the change, but a, a misdemeanor is defined by um, a crime that could be punished by up to one year in county jail, just by definition. Obviously, you know, that's not something that's um, you know, every misdemeanor is not uh, punished with a year in jail.
Understood.
Okay. Any more questions?
Yeah, one more quickly. Clackamas County Jail, are they housing any people that are getting sentenced to a, if, I mean, do you guys have the capacity to put someone in jail for possession of two grams of cocaine?
So.
Are they just gonna get released anyways? Get matrixed out?
That's a good question. Um, I don't know capacity wise, you know, what we're gonna be able to do um, on, on day one. Um, I don't know where we are on capacity right now, but um, you know, we're gonna have to make some adjustments for that and look at, you know, which, what other, what other crimes are associated with, also with a drug possession, uh, and make those determinations. Um, I can definitely check with our jail commander and find out kind of what that plan is and, and how many um, inmates they, you know, they believe that are gonna increase, or how many beds they'll need to increase for that population.
Do you know if they're full? Is the jail currently full?
Um, I, I don't know. I don't know.
Thank you, Chief Mendoza.
Any more questions? Those are all pretty good questions, by the way, but I think they need a lot more work on this one still.
I'm gonna jot down a couple of notes and, and follow up with you about the jail questions. Um, and then, just one second, I'll start with RV. Um, so the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office has been working with county council and made some proposal to um, the um, Clackamas County Commission to, to make some adjustments to our county code in regards to towing RVs. And really what we're trying to address, uh, the issues and the hurdles that we have over um, you know, one, once an RV has been deemed that we need to tow it because it's either condemned or hazardous, or, you know, parked in the middle of the road, or whatever that may be. Um, I guess I, in the middle of the road may not be the best example. We're talking about RVs that are on the side of the road. Um, if a, um, if a person is inside that RV, we're, we're a little bit restricted on, um, you know, if they're living there, even if it's, if we believe it's the point where it's uninhabitable. Uh, you know, somebody, we won't be surprised sometimes if somebody's trying to live in there. Um, so we're, we're, we made a proposal to change the county code to make that a little bit easier and uh, allow us to remove these RVs, but a portion of that also that we've consulted with county council on um, utilizing an administrative warrant, uh, which An administrative warrant, which will then allow us to enter the RV for purposes of pulling that person out. It's not a criminal warrant, it's an administrative warrant and. Really what we'd be doing is using it to enforce the county code and then to tow the RV. I'm not aware of. Any other jurisdiction that is doing that at this, at this time, but it's something that we are. Waiting on the advice of of the county council and and the commissioners to approve these changes. To see if we can find a specific set of circumstances where we can apply this for those really challenging situations. So I know that that was. I think that was in the news at one point and somebody had asked about an update on that, what we were doing with Clackamas County. My suggestion for the city of Estacada is to wait and see how this goes and is it effective? Is that something that we can utilize? I know that Estacada's. Ordinance for towing mirrors what Clackamas County is, so this would be. You know, potential that in the future that we ask for an adjustment to that city ordinance for tow.
Great, thank you. Any questions on that?
If a, if an RV is identified as. Needing to be towed and it gets, you guys go and place a sticker on it with a period of time with a warning, correct?
Correct.
Is it the license plate or the VIN number on it documented? At that time?
More than likely, yes.
Do they, so if it's got a sticker on it and they move it two blocks down and they take the sticker off, does it reset the process?
Depends how the code or the ordinance is written, and that was something that we've been in discussion with the the city manager on on how to account for that.
It seems like they would just identify the vehicle. With either a plate or a VIN, I know it's not always possible, but find some sort of identifying mark on it to identify it and then that it would be. Once it's parked down the street, just because they moved it doesn't mean that it's not still in violation, that's what I would like to see in our code is that. If it's identified to be towed and it's been left there, that if it moves two blocks down the road. And parks again, they peel the sticker off, that they're not able to reset the clock, that we can tow it from day one. From two blocks down the road or wherever, if it's parked on any public streets in the city of Estacada, I'd like to see it be able to be towed.
And I believe that is is being addressed in the proposal.
Alright, do you have anything else for us tonight?
No, sir.
We appreciate you, thank you very much for that information, because we're just going to be getting into that RV discussion, so we appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have a question, are you going to be here for the, when we get into the draft code changes for the camping ordinance?
Yes, I plan to stay.
Okay, because I'll, I'm sure I'll have some, at least one question for you during that.
Sure.
Great. Okay, we are done with department committee reports, so we will move on to council business and we'll search any other questions. None, okay. The first thing we have on council business, the second consideration for ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero zero six. An ordinance declaring a permanent ban on psilocybin service centers and the manufacture of psilocybin products. So, I will. Look for another motion.
Is this, is it, is this not what we covered in the consent agenda?
It, we've already, yeah, we've already covered, but this is the second consideration, to put it on the ballot. Yeah.
Okay. So it's it's a two-step process, just because. The state regulates our ability to regulate it, so they specify this like two-step process.
Okay, so regardless of of the outcome of this second consideration, this is still going on the ballot. And, you know, regardless of we vote yes or no on this, it's still going on the ballot for the people to decide whether they want the ban or not.
Yes. I mean, if if you. If you were to, if you were not to pass this, then. We, our resolution to put it on the ballot would essentially be voided because. That resolution assumes that this ordinance would be passed.
As a second consideration.
Yeah.
So can I get a motion on the floor?
I move to approve ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero zero six, an ordinance declaring a permanent ban on psilocybin service centers. And the manufacture of psilocybin products.
Yeah, but first, do I have a second?
Second.
First and second. Let's do a roll call on this, please, Eddie.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
No.
Yes.
No.
Yes. Thank you very much. Okay, next we have. Draft code changes for the camping ordinance, so this is something I'll hand over to you guys and I'm sure Chief, you'll have something to add into that eventually. So I'll give it to you, Alina, we'll start off with you and then Peter can jump in.
Yeah, sure. I think we discussed this at the last meeting and we also worked with Mendoza and our. Our code enforcement agent to develop some language that we feel will help fulfill the purposes that we. You guys had asked for at that last meeting.
Either you got anything you want to add on this?
Yeah, just, just, I want to make that distinction again between camping and sleeping, so what we're regulating is camping. You know, we're not denying anyone the ability to sleep, but we are regulating the manner in which that can occur. And those are primarily driven by health and safety considerations, health and safety for the individual in the community both.
Any questions on that?
I do, so Lieutenant Mendoza, I know that your your deputies, you guys cover a lot of jurisdictions. You guys cover a lot of different, you know, towns, small towns, you know, unincorporated Clackamas County. So, when, I understand that a deputy that is assigned to Estacada will be following our. Ordinance, following our guidelines on, you know, how they. How they handle this, you know, camping code, what about the the deputies that are not assigned to Estacada, the ones that are the, you know. Because I know we still have a lot of calls that are answered by deputies not assigned to Estacada, so, I mean, how how does that work? Are they going to have to know, you know, everybody's, everybody's ordinances or is there going to be, you know, like they're going to go by what Clackamas County says? You know, first and foremost, and then, you know, that that's just, that's my question and I I just, you know, in my head, it it feels like it's important to me. But it might not be as important to everybody else, I just, you know, that, that's just some stickler in my head.
Sure, I I think that's a great question. Yeah, I know that, so that the short and quick answer to that is, yes, that the deputies will need to know what the city ordinance is. To to enforce it, so if you're, if they're unaware that it's more restrictive here in Estacada and then. You know, they're responding to a call here. If if they're unaware, then they're not going to apply it, or if they're uncertain about it, they're not going to apply it. If they are aware, then then they could, and just like the the deputy or officers that are assigned here. So that's more of a, an education piece, training piece, it may be. It's not going to be something that we train all the dep, you know, bring all the deputies in and provide them training, it could be as simple as as an email. And then really direct our efforts to the deputies that work in this East County area to make sure that they're familiar with it.
Are there? Codes in different municipalities right now or different, different areas within Clackamas County that have different regulations that the officers are already dealing with differently?
Yes.
So they, they become familiar with it, when what, you know, when they talk to each other at a meeting or something, this, the city is doing this differently, it becomes. Within a period of time, it becomes known. With with the education.
Yes, it takes, it takes some time, I mean, it's, we're not isolated here, I I know in talking with the chief. In Happy Valley, that is, that's an issue that they have with their ordinances in the parks. That when a deputy is working overtime or gets called to assist Happy Valley with a call, that they may, they're not going to be. Intimately familiar with all the ordinances and not really know what they can enforce, because they're going to revert back to. What they can enforce in the county, so it's a, it's a training and education piece.
Think it'd be a good thing to note for the city staff, if the city's contacting the sheriff's office, that they. Make the, on the call, make them aware of the ordinance, just so the officer that's responding knows, if it happens to be a city staff that's making the call. Or code enforcement that's calling.
Anybody else?
This would be for Peter. You know, last year we had looked at putting a camping ban in place that would bring us in line with measure three one one five, how is this? Different from what we were looking at before, what are we, what are we looking to accomplish this time?
Well, so. Last year, we were looking at two things, we were looking at federal law and we were looking at state law. And the state law allows us to have reasonable restrictions on camping and the way that I interpret that is that. Like regulating the use of open flames, you know, we have extreme fire risk here. So in Estacada, that would be a reasonable restriction. There are jurisdictions that allow wooden structures. And those wooden structures often catch on fire, over half of Portland's fire calls are actually to encampments. And it's because the structures aren't built to fire code and safety code. And so it's really doing a disservice to the inhabitants of those to allow them to live in a flammable structure. So that's something that we're regulating because we're trying to keep them safe. So I would say that all of, all of what we have done is grounded in health and safety. And so I feel that those are reasonable restrictions. There are some cities that, for whatever reason, allow people to, you know, reside in wooden structures. And I guess they're not concerned about fire risk or that sort of thing. So these are Estacada specific. Due to our kind of lived experience here and enhanced factors like the forest around us. Does the language in, under campsite where it says means? Any place established for the purpose of maintaining a temporary place, whether or not such place incorporates the use of any tent, lane, two shack, trailer camper? Does that mean, does that? Going to be able to address the issue of all the garbage that comes with? If someone's sleeping outside and they have a shopping cart full of stuff and they're leaving. A mess for the city to clean up afterwards, is that going to address that issue, the amount of stuff? That they have with them while they're sleeping in public. They have a sleeping bag, they're staying warm, and then they have a shopping cart full of. Junk and, well, stuff, whatever it is, that inevitably gets left behind, some of it, the waste of it. Are we able to address the stuff that comes along with someone sleeping on public property? Yeah, I mean, there. People aren't allowed to litter and one of the issues I've had in other jurisdictions, particularly with people that are sleeping close to riparian areas. Like rivers or ponds or streams is that. People's stuff gets in that water and creates environmental hazards. And our ability to clean that up. It it becomes very difficult, so the idea is we want people to be able to safely sleep and we want them to be able to stay warm. But we want to keep the city clean and we want to prevent. Structures or. Any apparatus from catching on fire, and so that's the, there oftentimes, if if. Police are citing someone, they're not citing them for sleeping, they're citing them for. You know, water pollution in the second degree or something else, which actually comes with a lot more flexibility. Than just saying, okay, well, you use more than a sleeping bag. So that's the, you know, when people are, when police are getting called to something, there's usually crimes outside of this. This just allows, whether it's Ant Farm or someone else, who would get these grant fund, will you get grant funds so that they can do cleanup? Like the ability to, you know, clean stuff up. Better. And and my other experience that I've had in other jurisdictions is that if people are moving, so if they're not. Establishing quote-unquote campsite, then they have, they accumulate far less. Stuff, it's if there's a established campsite that then you just see more and more stuff accumulating. And then that can become a a public health hazard or just members of the public see it and don't like it. And that creates, the blue tarps create a lot of problems, because people see them and then that, you know, then. Hopefully, they're not trying to do an enforcement on their own, I mean, that's the, that's what we want to provide.
And I found a definitive answer to Mike's question on page sixty one. Ten dot twelve dot zero nine zero, moving a vehicle, the moving of any vehicle or trailer. To any other location inside or outside of city limits shall not extend the time allowed for parking on any city street alley or other public right of way.
So, yeah, that's great, that's in there, but I just want to make sure there's a procedure in place to be able to identify the vehicle. So when they move it from one location to another and they take the sticker off of it, what's going to trigger the fact? What what's going to enforce that, how are we going to know that that vehicle was stickered? Across the city, I guess, just want to have some sort of procedure in place so that it's documented. So that we can enforce it when it gets moved to another location, because inevitably, like down in the, well, I'm sure you guys deal with it. Down near Johnson Creek and eighty second, where you get one block that gets them piled up, you guys kick them all out of there. And then they go a few blocks over, just where they get towed, somebody comes and. Jerry rigs a tow rig to them and moves them a couple of blocks away and it's the same thing over and over again, I just want to avoid that.
But, yeah, I I'll comment on that, so procedurally. I I believe I said something, in most cases, they're going to look at a or document a license plate and a VIN. And the reason that we would do that in most cases, if not, it should be done in all cases, because. I mean, honestly, you're going to look really silly if you put a tag on a car and then the next deputy comes and finds out that it was stolen and you never checked it, right? So you're going to make sure that you are, make sure that the VIN matches the license plate and then we make sure that it's not stolen and. Or we could have gotten it back for somebody, so that's just generally should be done. And it'll be written on the, on the tag, so we will have a documentation of that, plus everything that we run in CAD is is saved under unit histories. And we can see when it was run and and by who. And the, the other question about. You know, campsites, if this, this ordinance or code dealing with. Camping is, you know, one tool, but if garbage is, you know, if garbage is discarded on the ground. That's another crime that's already covered by statute of, you know, offensive littering and. And so it's just a matter of, kind of like we talked about, just being familiar with with the code and being familiar with statutes and ordinances of. How you can enforce things and so that would be just another tool that a deputy could use.
My, my biggest concern, I just wanted to respond to that real quick, and I know Heidi's waiting, but it's just that we have people that are going and camping by. The river and they're leaving large amounts of garbage under the bridge and along the the riverbed, I was just trying to find out if there's a way that we could. Regulate that before it becomes an issue, instead of waiting until the piles are down there, if we see someone that night and they brought a whole bunch of stuff with them that. Looks like it's likely going to get left there, if we can address it then, instead of having to. Wait for grant funds to do a cleanup after the fact, if there was something, language that we could put in there. To eliminate it upfront, because then there's also going to be, after they leave it down there. Then we have to send somebody from the city down to identify what's valuable, what's not, what we have to warehouse for thirty days. And then we have to go there and then someone comes in to claim their stuff, then someone from city staff is going to have to. Help them prove that they own it somehow, which I don't know how you do that, I I had a pair of blue pants or whatever that, whatever it may be. There's not, if there's not an identifying marker, it just seems like a lot of the city staff's time is going to be wasted. And it's putting the health and safety of members of the community that want to go enjoy the river. They have all that debris down there and garbage needles or whatever else that we find down there, going into the river and I just think that. Not just the health and safety of the people that are illegally camping, but the health and safety of the members of the community that are. Having their kids float down the river and get stuck with a hypodermic needle or find drugs or find whatever else, the mess that gets left down there.
Clarify that that's not public property. That's owned by PGE.
So part of what, part of what we're trying to do is get agreements with all these entities that would allow. People to be trespassed from their property and then like on an expedited basis. And then the other thing too is that. Both ODOT and PGE have contracted with an entity that cleans up the stuff and so it's. Making sure that our people know, okay. We're going to deal with the person and then this is the, this is, this is the agreement we have. That they can be trespassed from the property, that PGE authorizes that. That we have an agreement with them that would allow us to do it and then the second piece is, and we need to call this phone number. And then the second piece is, and we need to call this phone number in order to get this cleaned up before there are rains or something that's going to have that stuff in the river.
And not, and not every situation is the same, but you know, there's, it would be my expectation if, if, if the people that we're contacting are able to clean it up themselves, we don't have to just give them a, a citation or make an arrest and, and leave all the garbage. I mean, they can, we can issue them a citation and, and tell them to pick up the garbage and pack it out and in, in most cases, we'll have the time to allow for that to happen. It takes some cooperation from, from their part, but um I've seen that happen many times.
So I was thinking back to last year when we were trying to um comply with the federal code and we were thinking of um a certain uh space area for them to keep things. So is this, was that, was that with the federal?
Yeah, so with, with the federal laws that were in place prior to the Grants Pass case being decided by the Supreme Court, you couldn't prohibit camping essentially. So you had, you had to have a place where people could camp. And again, I'm drawing a distinction between camping and sleeping. So we, we, people are allowed to sleep, but we're able to regulate how they can, we can prohibit camping, not sleeping. And then we can define camping in a way under the three one one five that we couldn't under the Ninth Circuit cases.
Okay, so I was thinking if in our code, we can put something in there that all belongings must be inside or reasonably near the sleeping area. So there isn't a trail of items or a larger footprint. Cause I know why you just said that usually when people are moving along, they don't have a lot of stuff. But that might be something that we could try to enforce.
So what, what I've noticed works is that if you, if you see the person, you know, sleeping, however they're sleeping, and they have stuff there and you immediately are able to deal with it, then stuff doesn't accumulate. Because they're, they're not going to come back to the same place. They're going to find someplace else and, and if they're moving eve- even within the city, it's just harder to accumulate. It's when someone kind of establishes a sleeping space that they, and then they start seeing, you know, whether it's people putting stuff out because it's free or what have you, they start accumulating that. That's where you then have those issues. And then that can like attract. I mean, frankly, vermin, that, that's an issue in a bunch of cities. You know, and it, it's just then, then when the police do make contact with them and they're like, hey, you need to clean this up. It becomes a lot harder for them to clean it up and transport it just because there's so much more volume. And so what I found is like early intervention and helping them understand where there's services they can get. Cause we really don't have very many at all. That really allows, whether it's the police or ant farm, to help them find the services that they need that we might not be able to offer. But it's that early intervention that prevents the accumulation of stuff. Some of it garbage, some of it not garbage. And as was said, like sometimes telling the difference between the garbage and not the garbage can be really challenging. So we, we don't want to have to impound their stuff. We want them to take their stuff with them.
Yeah, I'm just looking at this, it says the maximum fine could, could be up to five hundred dollars. And then additionally violators may be trespassed from all city properties by any law enforcement off, officer city code. Is there a way to streamline that so that we can kind of quit playing games with you could be fined or you could be trespassed? Is there a way to write this to where you get one warning and then you will be trespassed or whatever? That way we're not revisiting. Point case would be like say an RV parked in front of Red Fox that distinguishably has piles of trash outside the back of the trailer and trash coming out of the vehicle, holding the trailer that clearly doesn't belong and clearly isn't just being parked there to run to get and go or something like that, right? At, at what point, it's great that we're building this code, but when are we gonna enforce the code? And at what point are we gonna safeguard ourselves where we could say, hey, you got your warning, you were asked to move it, your, your officers have it in their CAD according to you, saying that they would have just ran and dealt with this. If they come back through two hours later or whatever the next day and they see that, can they issue a citation right then and there and trespass on the spot if it's public dwelling?
So if it's, if it's city property and we're going to tra- trespass someone, we need to make sure that the trespassing is reasonable. So we have to look at the, um, and I'll give you a specific example in other jurisdiction. We had two gentlemen and they had like three vehicles or four vehicles. They, it was city slash county owned property, not technically a park, future park. They got into a violent altercation with the neighbor, which is, you know, the exact opposite outcome that we would want. They were arrested and they were taken to jail. And then I worked with the DA in order to come up with a um distance from the place where they were arrested, that they could not come back to that area of distance that kind of was very similar to the city's boundaries. So they were essentially, they essentially were not going to be in the city anymore. But in order to do that and come to that agreement, we had to spell out the steps that we had taken to address it beforehand because there have been several. The altercation, get a statement from, and we also trespassed the, the, the homeowner from the city property for a period of time as well. So we were not, nobody was getting trespassed because of their status. It was based on the activity that they had engaged in, which was violent.
If we were to get there with piles of trash, which would be litter and.
So if it's on public property, we could, we could cite them. We'd want to document exactly what they had done prior to trespassing them. If it's in front of the Red Fox, that's private property, I think.
No, it's, it's on, it's on the streets, on the.
Oh, it's on the street, okay. Yeah, that's something that we can address through.
So how many times do we have to warn them before we can trespass them?
Well, so if it's like, if it's a specific city park or something like that, it's pretty easy to trespass them. If it's a city street, we have to um, we have to follow our code related to the parking. Check all those boxes and then um what I've had, what I've done in other jurisdictions is to tow the, tow the RV to like a yard and then they have um. And in the instance that we did this, it was the city paid the thirty day period. So these people were not going to have to pay. Saw like they were gonna get out of jail and be looking at like thirty, a thirty day bill for storage. We paid for the storage and then they didn't claim the property and then we had to pay an amount to have it disassembled. It's not cheap, it's like six to eight grand per RV. I, and that, this is from a few years ago, that number might have changed. But the, I think it was sixty five hundred. And I think the storage fee that we paid was something like five hundred and it'd be about seven grand. But you know, that was a um definitely a nuisance vehicle. So we can, we, we kind of have to do it on a case by case basis, but we can work with um chief so that his officers understand and we can work with our code enforcement people to make sure that we take all these predicate steps. So that we're insulated from liability.
My question was specifically about campsites, not so much the vehicles, but campsites if we're, if we're warning people repeatedly about illegal campsites on public property, property within the city.
We would cite them.
Cite them the first time, the second time we trespass.
The campsite's not legal. Like if someone's camping in a campsite, that's not, that's not legal. So we would want to, I, I think like warn, it would be because this is relatively new, I think a warning is probably prudent. Uh, understanding what they can and can't do, that they have to contain their stuff. And then if they aren't willing to comply, I think working with code enforcement or officers in order to cite them is probably the appropriate course of action.
And the next one would be to trespass them?
Probably.
Okay, so warning, fine, trespass.
Yeah, if, if the behavior merits, if the behavior merits trespass, we have to be a little bit careful with trespassing.
Can we put that language in our code and be okay?
It's actually to our benefit to have the flexibility because then instead of, cause these situations are all different. So we can then say these are step forth, these are the steps that we took. These are the services that were offered. This is the harm that was caused. Now we have no choice but to do this, you know, whether it's a trespass.
How often are we dealing with this situation on public property in Estacada? Have we had a lot of campsites that we've had to clear out? Would this help with what we've had to deal with in the past year at all?
So I'll start off with, uh, it will help because if we do find ourselves in a situation, at least we have some, some rules to follow. As far as um how often it's happening, these tend to be in places where people, you know, like, like we're, you know, people are holed up down by the river where they can't be seen. Um, and then it's just a matter of like these jurisdictional lines of who owns the properties, that city properties, is it, you know, public or private? So I don't, I, I don't know if I can tell you definitively like how many are on public property versus private. And then um, and that's part of why we've, we're trying to work with these entities for either being on an exclusion program or being able to trespass them from a particular location.
It seems to me the, the biggest issue, the, the ones at least that I'm aware of are more PGE property as opposed to city vesticated public property. I, I, I don't know how many issues we've had um of people camping in our parks.
I know that when the weather's nice, that you have people sleep in the bowl at the skate park, so there's one working example.
Um, I'm just wondering, is our code enforcement officers still part time?
Yes.
And so are we getting enough incidents where we would consider getting full time with that?
And they don't want to work full time? For this, doing this, I mean, this is hard. So if we, if we, if we got to the point where we needed a full time person, we'd probably have to hire somebody else. I, I don't, uh, this is very minor of what they deal with. I mean, most of the time there are people calling about weeds and, you know, cars parked where they shouldn't be and their neighbor's lawn and barking dogs. I mean, th- this is, this is so miniscule in the amount of, of, if this took up more, then there'd just be less dealing with barking dogs, you know, you, we could help her set priorities of what the council feels are the most important things to address quickly.
Mike could.
Just one more add in before we uh go on. I think we need to visit uh code enforcement as a whole. I think code enforcement should be code driven, not complaint driven. Where we're having the problem now, and I'll just give you an example. Me, I live in a little private road uh around nobody. I, the neighbor yard was out of control, I reported it. A neighbor came stomping up to my door and got pissed off, which I could understand. But at the same time, I shouldn't have had to deal with it, that's what code enforcement is for. So if we're going by the way it's set up now where code enforcement only goes if there's a complaint and then tells the cu- person who the complainer is, that's kind of ridiculous. So I think we need to revisit that here real soon. So maybe that's something we put on a future uh agenda to, to look at. And also making code enforcement a full time project. Because whether our code enforcer wants to work more than that or not, we need it as our city is growing at the rate that it is. So I hope that that'll be something we also add into that. So maybe keep on note of that, just, just for reference.
The next budget year.
Okay, Chief, you had something you want to add right there?
I, I was gonna clarify an earlier question and I, it, what it sounded like to me was there was a question if, if we could trespass someone from the city for activities that, that were on a public roadway. And I, and I think if, if that sounds correct, I would say I think that that would begin into maybe uncharted territory on, on how you would utilize trespassing.
Yeah, where we, where we most would use trespassing would be not on a public street, but in, on other public property. So like uh someone gets into a fight in a park, you trespass the people that got in the fight in the park, from the park. And we have to be, we have to look at like, we have to look at the proximity. So does that mean we trespass them from all city parks? Not necessarily. But maybe the, maybe the behavior was sufficiently bad that we can. And that's why we need the flexibility of, of looking at it on a case by case basis. If we're trespassing, someone from the city has a hole, um, it would, it's, it's very challenging and we would, it would be like a felony type of situation involving public property and probably a violent crime. So like just trespassing from all of our streets, that would be extremely challenging because like the interstate commerce clause and things of that nature.
Where I was coming from with that question was just, this was just, if, and I know it's not an issue now, I just see the cities that surround us where it's just run rampant and it's destroyed cities, destroyed Portland, the homeless problem there just destroyed the city. Is if they're setting up a campsite and you got a tent that pops up on a public street in front of a business, they get warned, they move two blocks over on a public street in front of another business, they get fined. They move three blocks over again. How would you, I mean, how do you trespass? My thought was that you would be trespassed from public property for, for public camping, illegally camping.
They, they couldn't, they can't erect a tent in Estacada. Like the camping includes a tent. So like you're not allowed to, you're not allowed to camp in the city regardless, regardless of your status. So like regardless of whether you're sixth graders that would like to do a camp out in the park or, or whether you're not a housed individual, you cannot camp in the city on a city park or a city sidewalk or anything like that. If they want to camp in their backyard, okay.
But what's the enforcement?
So the enforcement, as soon as the tent goes up, they get cited.
Okay.
So they're not allowed to erect the tent.
Understood, but they don't pay the ticket, they get cited, they don't pay the ticket and they set up two days later. What's the enforcement then? I don't think these tickets are getting paid is where I'm coming from. That is that like when they're writing citations to someone that doesn't, they're, you think they're paying a five dollar fine?
The cities that you're thinking of don't have any camping ordinance at all. Like the city of Portland tried to pass a reasonable time, place and manner restriction. Including like regulation of open flames and a judge tossed it. The judge stated, so they don't have any, other than posting and sweeping, the city of Portland doesn't have any tools it can use. And, and the cities you're seeing, it's sometimes they're not cities, sometimes they're urban unincorporated areas. A lot of times they just don't have the resources to deal with it and that's how it accumulates. Or it's not a priority. Whereas like you as a city council have made it very clear, this is a priority in the city.
All right, we thank you, that's very informational and I'm glad you all three were there uh to bounce it off of, so thank you for that. We will now uh move along. So what are you exactly looking for tonight? Just a consensus to move forward on this?
Yeah, we, given the, given the um the amount of community interest that we thought that this would generate, we wanted to take it slower and have really look at this thoughtfully and make sure it was kind of tailored for the city. And so I had actually anticipated more um public participation. So I guess maybe people think we're on the right track and, and that's why we um have had less.
Yeah, I think that's probably it. You're barking up the right tree, you're not gonna get a full house. I think we, we should put a motion on this. I think we, we, we should put a motion on this, only because I've done the consensus and a lot of times it doesn't work, we just kinda. Back, so let's put a motion on this, if somebody wants to read that into a motion, which is just what we have on the line item there. Um, we can go on with this, so can I have a motion?
One quick comment for the motion, I, I think it's a step in the right direction, I don't think this is finalized, I'd like to. See how this works out and then revisit it, any problems that Chief Mendoza and his officers are dealing with. Loopholes or any problems with the code, the way it's written, more than happy to address the concerns of the deputies to give them the tools that they need if there's. Something that you see or you're getting feedback from them, something we could do to help them more, uh, to give them every tool in their tool belt, so.
I, I appreciate that, you'll hear from me.
You know, cause I have a clarifying question as well, just, I'm thinking about this, right, so with the comments especially on what we can and can't trespass or. I agree with Councilman McElroy that. We can hand out all the citations, but what does it do, so with the trespass question, if there's drug paraphernalia involved, is that warrant an automatic trespass, there's no. I mean, to me that would be like, okay, we found you now with an illegal substance or something like that, or you did. Your deputies find them, that should be right to the top, right, like there's no. Here's a citation, here's a warning, like if you have drug paraphernalia, I think that warrants that you're trespassed, we don't need you here in this community. I mean, that's the same standard we would hold each other too, so.
I, I just think that if we can work with Chief Mendoza and the deputies around the tools at their disposal, particularly things like offensive littering. It's going to make it a lot easier and, and just, I, I think that. And, and I could be totally wrong, this, this might not be an accurate observation. What I've seen is that cities that, um, regulate this, uh, and are on top of it. People are just less inclined to, um. If you're getting cited in a jurisdiction and, and you're not being allowed to erect a tent if you wanna do that, there are other jurisdictions. Like Mon- Loma County that cur- currently don't have, you know, that don't have an ordinance that. That might be more attractive to people, um, and so I think that, you know, that. Whether or not a fine gets paid, eventually someone accumulates enough tickets that it turns into. Uh, criminal matter and if that can easily be avoided, then they're probably going to want to easily avoid it.
So what, what is the next step then, or is the plan to come back to us with the more formalized? And then we'll, okay, then we'll, we'll vote on that and.
Cause we're amending our code, so just if, if this is the direction we wanna go in for now, understanding that. Three, one, one, five could get challenged or could get repealed, there's interest that. Among some legislators in doing that, you know, that would cause us to take another look at this too. So this is our ability to use tools is evolving. And, you know, I think it makes sense that we work with our officers and code enforcement and then. We continue to have these conversations, so we make sure that they have tools they need.
Great, yeah, thanks.
Yeah, and again, I have a motion to proceed, this is only a motion to proceed.
Uh, I moved to proceed with the code draft amendments for our next meeting.
Okay, great.
Have a second?
Second.
First and second, all those on paper say hi.
Hi.
All those opposed, thank you. All right, moving forward, we are at citizen and community group comments, Joel Lipton. You didn't have a reason on there, so I leave it open for you.
Can you hear, can you hear me now?
Yep.
It's a little weird being from this side of the table, so. Um, I had a couple of things I wanted to share with you, cause I can offer a neat, a unique perspective now being a previous city councillor. And kinda seeing how different states and different cities handle things from a. From, not only from an outlooker, but also being able to communicate with some of that city council as well and, and where I'm at. So Heber Springs is slightly small, uh, larger than, than, uh, Estacada by about thousand to fifteen hundred people, something in there. Budgets roughly about the same, but their infrastructure is tremendously larger, they get, um, they have full-size community centers. They have, uh, lots of fast food chains, they have a Walmart, lots of different things in there and that's the, the main reason why I've been able to. Contract from the city council is how they actually handle some of their, some of their matters within the city. For example, they have two committees in the entire city, they have a budgetary committee and a planning commission. They reduce a lot of the red tape and a lot of extra steps to get these things in. They do some of the things that you guys do here with. The urban renewals and the grants and things like that, they attract to make things good for them. But at the same time, they have a secondary piece there where a lot of the businesses don't have to expend so much money to. Get permits and get the additional surveys and stuff to get things built, they do have a law enforcement that they can feel comfortable to rely on, that's local to the city. Um, and nothing against Blackmaus County, but when I go out there, I was actually quite surprised. I, on average, when I drive through the city, I'll see between seven and twelve different law enforcement officers in a city. Which technically with, when you look at mass size is bigger, but not much bigger. And that's because they have their own police department, they have a clock, they have the, their county sheriffs as well as state officers that patrol the area. It's a big thing for them, they handle the homeless different. So if you look around, we do have some homeless people that are out there in that area, you'll see them on looking for handouts and stuff as they get closer to. You know, like Walmarts and those areas, but you'll never see a tent, you'll never see a camp, you never see anything else because. They handle the, the homeless different there, they don't provide a lot of the resources that attract them to it. Those are put to the larger cities who have the resources and have the ability to handle that. And they also are strict on their laws and their rules, they have progressive, what you guys were kinda talking about earlier, but they, well, I think what. Uh, Councilor McElroy and maybe Councilor Metcalf were getting at, they have progressive punishments, so you get a fine. You know, that's your first round, you get a, we're warning and a fine, you can tell up to the officer, then it progresses into, you can get a trespass. Or you can become a misdemeanor at the same time because you violated it if it's within a certain period of time. They have progressive stuff, it doesn't have to go to court and be done out there, you have a progressive, if you violate the same thing within a certain period of time, there's progressive punishments. So something to look at that. I'm gonna go over for a couple minutes, I wanted to share some stuff, is that okay?
Are we all okay with that?
Go ahead.
I'm good with everybody else.
So I just, I just wanted, I have one chance to give it, I'm in from two thousand miles away, give me a chance to give you some information here, but they do, they do address it. On a progressive, um, a progressive punishment basis. Coming down with camping and you can't camp, you can't construct in the city limits except for where it's allotted to within a public park they have for camping. So, oh, you guys are on the right track, yes, but something to look at, which I didn't quite agree with, with, uh, Peter on. Was the approach when it comes down to the multiple violations in a short period of time and you are right, you can look at. How measure one ten worked when people got violations and, uh, for tickets, they didn't care, they said great, moved on, did it again, got another ticket. Didn't matter to them, that's why one ten didn't work along with many other reasons, you can't find somebody who doesn't care, it doesn't matter. You gotta provide something that does matter, you got to move them to jail, you got to move them off the property where they can't be there. That's what matters to them, action, so that's what helps keep ours clean and safe. As you know, uh, Arkansas does deal with a large, um, drug issue. But what you don't see from those statistics is the prosecution rate. Way higher in that area and the recovery rate is actually a lot higher as well, cause they do prosecute for the crimes. You guys have a uni- unique opportunity here, that was something that when I was here, I always. Spoke to a lot of deputies that they wish was here and that was the unclassified misdemeanor. That's an opportunity and don't care or listen to what the county's saying and nothing against what, what the county's doing, uh, Lieutenant, but. The reason why it works so good where in the city that I'm in is because. The city with an unclassified misdemeanor, misdemeanor, which I figured what they call it in Arkansas, something's equivalent, gives them a chance to set. What those punishments are on a city basis, they don't have to depend on what the county does, you guys have the ability to set. The status quo here in the city with that, you can classify to what, what a misdemeanor would be. And you can prosecute it if you so choose in your own city, misdemeanors can be prosecuted in a municipality. Where the felonies have to be prosecuted at a, at a county level or higher. So you guys can actually choose to what the, the judge has to do with that, cause it's set according to the laws, if you say, you ask, you know. What could be done on a law, I think is what the word you said in, in one of the ordinances and you said, how do we make that different, you change the. Uh, would or could to a shall, shall be X, the judge then has to follow those rules, if it's shall be five days in jail for a drug misdemeanor. They, he has to do a minimum of five days or more, it's what the laws you set based upon the code in that area.
You told, I'm gonna have to ask you to speed it up a bit.
Yep, anyway, so. That's the information I can share for you, I just wanna see if you guys have any questions about specifically about the city out there, I can share with you. What you guys are working on, I can tell you what has been working out there, cause I'm seeing a working model out there. And I've seen another challenger we ran into here.
I'd be interested in finding out how they got the fast food chains in there without the traffic studies, is it on a main thoroughfare like off of a highway where they've got a lot of traffic coming through that? Enabled it to happen?
It's definitely a main thoroughfare, there's a, only a couple, they have a main street and they have a main, we call it fast food drill, but it's their main thoroughfare, which all of their primary businesses are off. And basically they set them, they all set on that one because it's productive for business. And what they did is they, they didn't have to have all the traffic studies, they have a main thoroughfare.
Is this, is this town between two larger towns?
Nope, it's, uh, the, it's about an hour north of Little Rock, the next closest town's about thirty-five minutes away and the next one's about forty-five minutes away, different directions. So technically it would be, but it's north of it, so.
But, I mean, so that main thoroughfare, you have to take the, that, that's a, a main route to get from one town through to one of the, to another larger town?
No, there's a bypass, okay, so, and.
Well, I'm just, just taking into consideration the situation that we're in, we've got nothing that way.
Hmm.
There's no larger town that way to get to, so.
Well, and, and put it in conjunction with what you'd see here in Estacada, think of, um, Main Street and Broadway. So as being the two main regions, their ones are a little bit bigger, more space to it, but. Think of like their two main, Main Street and then they have Broadway as their second one, that's where the faster it would be on Broadway, for example. And then Main Street to where they did like other little smaller shops and kinda queue downtown and there's a courthouse there too as well, so. Um, now the big difference, if you look up, and I, I recommend looking at Heber Springs, make phone calls, talk to people.
Go up and come and talk to you after the meeting.
Fair enough.
We can't continue.
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you.
All right, we appreciate you coming and visiting, filling us in, thank you.
All right. Nothing?
Anybody online there, I don't think they're, oh, okay, mayor and council reports and comments, Jerry.
Uh, thanks everybody for showing up and again, thanks for a great discussion tonight, good questions being answered, good, great information from staff and Lieutenant Mendoza. Thank you guys.
Yeah, I just appreciate the people that were here tonight and the community and I. Election season's coming, so be sure to be involved regardless of where you stand, vote, it matters. And, uh, let's do something to speak for our community, make the decisions.
Uh, thank you everybody for coming, uh, thank you Chief Mendoza, I really appreciate all of your guidance here, this is really, it can, it's really complicated sometimes. Um, though it can be easy solutions, um, Elena, thank you so much for all the work you've done with the grants, it's made such a difference in Estacada. Um, have a good night, everybody.
Thank you everyone for coming and just wanna recognize Elena and her team, anyone that's helping you support with the grants, I.
I wish I had a team.
Well, is it just you, is it you all alone that's doing the grant writing and doing the grant process? Well, thank you, I mean, millions and millions of dollars for the city and I know there's gonna be. Millions more coming with a wastewater treatment plan, I just wanna recognize all the work you're putting, I know it's tedious, I've. Been involved slightly with some grant stuff and it's, gives you a headache just getting through a few pages of it, so the ability to get all of those and follow them through the process just. We really appreciate the money you're saving for the members of the community, thank you Chief Mendoza for coming and sharing with us and, and answering our questions, appreciate everyone coming.
Well. I just wanna thank, uh, everyone for the input tonight, great discussion and, and the, the discussion on the code. Really, really appreciate that from the involvement of, of the three of you as well too and all that have been involved in that and it's, it's. Good for the city and really like to hear that you're working with the other jurisdictions as well too, it's very much appreciated, thank you.
Jerry.
Well, I think, uh, most of the other councillors said all the good things this evening, so I don't have much to say, I just appreciate everyone showing up tonight and, um. I appreciate a short meeting.
Again, I thank all of you for coming tonight, um, I know sometimes it can get long and drawn out. But at the same time, I think, uh, our city is growing in a way that is healthy. And I think we're going through trials and tribulations, but we're getting through, we're learning and we'll get it right as we move along, so thank you. And thank you for coming tonight, this meeting is adjourned.